Welcome to the April.
Yes, it is April.
April.
My calendar says March. I blame that.
We have March, then we have April. April 7th, 2025, Troy City Council meeting. We ask that all cell phones be silenced for the duration of the meeting. And tonight invocation is Mr. Phillips and pledge. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today with humility and grace. And hopefully you will give us guidance on all of the items that come before us this evening. Please watch over our military, our entire country. Wrap your arms around our world here to give us peace and hope. In these words, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee, here. Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Present.
Mrs. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Severt.
Here.
Mr. Widdon.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Motion to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second. Motion to excuse Mr. Phillips by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling is excused.
Thank you. Moving on, could you please read the minutes of March 17th, 2025 meeting?
Minutes of council, March 17, 2025. Committee reports. The Law and Ordinance Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to support the renewal of the state capital improvement program. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing the purchase of a parcel, excuse me, at 330 South Crawford Street. Committee, the whole report was read by the council president regarding the meeting for the schematics of the downtown safety streetscape and utilities improvement project. Resolution number R 14 2025, support the state issue to renewal was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O 5 2025, purchased real property at 330 Crawford Street, first reading and adopted following various comments council adjourned at 7:28 PM.
Move to accept the minutes.
Second. Motion to approve by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to our numerous committee reports tonight, we will start with community partnerships. Mrs. Marshall.
All right, we had a couple. So this committee met March 31st regarding the 2025 Strawberry Festival to be held June 6th through the 8th, 2025. The festival is to take place in both the downtown and levee areas with the activation of an area of the DORA temporary boundary. The Troy Area Chamber of Commerce will be able to sell alcohol on the upper levee June 7th and 8th. The event will continue to provide an opportunity for local nonprofits to raise funds for community purposes while providing an opportunity for residents and visitors to enjoy an outstanding event. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce where the 2025 Troy Strawberry Festival provide for the standard notwithstanding legislation and authorize activation of a portion of the DORA temporary activation boundary so that the liquor permit application can be submitted. This committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted by Mr. Severt, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Any questions or comments? Continue, please.
All right, number two. This committee met again March 31st to consider recommending a notwithstanding ordinance for a Troy truck yard event on May 10th, which event will include the sale and consumption of beer only on public property. The location is East Water Street from near New Street to the North Counts intersection. It is the recommendation of this committee that notwithstanding legislation be prepared authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property for the Troy Truck Yard Event planned for May 10th so that the liquor permit application can be submitted. This committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted again by Mr. Severt, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Questions on the truck yard event? Moving on, we'll go to finance. Mr. Severt.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee, the first one is a Tax Incentive Review Council report. This committee met March 31st to review the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council, Turk, regarding the compliance status of the Troy Town Park TIF and the five enterprise zone agreements that were in place as of December 31st, 2024. Such review and report is required on an annual basis. The Turk recommended that the TIF agreement and four of the five remaining enterprise zone agreements be continued. As Agreement Number 36 with Arc abrasives, Inc., is not compliant with the employment commitments, the recommendation is that Agreement Number 36 be terminated. Therefore, this committee recommends that legislation be prepared accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Committee Council, that current enterprise zone agreements Number 33, 34, 35, and 37 be continued, that Enterprise Zone Agreement Number 36 with Arc abrasives, Inc., be terminated as noncompliant, and that the Troy Town Park TIF be continued. And that the city must file an annual report with the Ohio Department of Development as soon as possible. Committee supports emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chairman of the Finance Committee.
Any questions on the Turk report? Continue.
The second is regarding the Employee Creation Incentive Program and Project Sturgeon. This committee met March 31st to consider the application filed for incentives under the Employee Creation Incentive Program for an expansion project. A local company has planned expansion that upon completion will create 166 new jobs with an annual payroll of over $7 million. This application meets the general standards for the Employment Creation Incentive Program for an expansion project and has been recommended by city staff. Based on the payroll projection, the annual rebate should be approximately $34,000 annually for six years. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to approve the project agreement application of the Employee Creation Incentive Program for an expansion project filed by Project Sturgeon, subject to the applicant identifying itself in writing on the application no later than August 31st, 2025. And that's, that is, that's respectfully submitted, Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself. I just wanted to point out in the detailed report, you have members Rozelle, Schilling, and Turwilliger being here.
Sorry.
And Mr. Milliger would not have been here.
Be corrected.
So, but we just probably should correct that for the record. Other than that, that's my report.
Thank you. Law and ordinance, Mr. Widdon.
Thank you, President. On March 31st, this committee met to consider two unrelated amendments to the fee schedule as well as amendments to the public records policy and the sewer use ordinance. The amendments are based on state law and/or provision amendments. These amendments are discussed in the detailed report. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to, one, amend the public records policy to reflect the provisions of House Bill 315. This legislation will be submitted as an emergency measure to meet the April 9th, 2025 effective date of House Bill 315. Two, amend sections of Section 915 of the Codified Ordinance regarding excessive strength wastewater discharge. And three, amend the fee schedule to reflect both areas of the fee amendments. This legislation will be submitted as an emergency measure based on the effective date of House Bill 315 with reference to the sewer fee amendments indicating that the January 1st, 2026 effective date. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Any questions on that report? You have a second one, correct?
I do. This committee also met on March 31st to review the dedication of easements at the Hook Elementary School/North School site that were requested by the city. These easements are part of a replat submitted by the Board of Education. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared excepting the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and bike path easements for the Hook School/North School site included in the Board of Education replat and authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute any documents related to the easements. Respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Questions, comments? Moving on to personnel, Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee members Phillips and Pierce met March 31st to consider authorizing an additional project manager position. The necessity for the position due to the significant increase in projects budgeted and scheduled in the 2025 to 2029 capital investment plan and beyond, and the need for additional supervision of projects and staff is discussed in the detailed report. It is also anticipated that the position can be funded within fund balances. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared amending the appropriate salary ordinance to add a second project manager position and that the position be paid at the grade nine pay level. This committee supports emergency legislation to establish the position so that recruitment can commence ahead of the heavy 2025 construction season. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as chair.
Questions on new position? Thank you. Recreation and Parks, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you. This committee met March 31st to consider the final authorization of the design build contract for the park maintenance building project. Under the design build process of the ORC, council previously authorized the final design and ordering of the steel structure in an amount not to exceed $525,000. Through the design build process, the contractor is to provide guaranteed maximum price for this project, which is $1,825,000, which amount includes the previously authorized $525,000. The additional amount to be encumbered to complete the project is $1,300,000. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an additional design build contract for the park maintenance building project in the amount of not to exceed $1,300,000 with the total cost of the project not to exceed $1,825,000. Committee supports emergency legislation so that construction can proceed as quickly as possible and to hopefully have construction completed in 2025. Respectfully submitted, Chrissy Marshall, Jeffrey Widdon, and myself as chair.
Questions on the park building? Last but not least, streets and sidewalks. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, sir. This committee met March 31st regarding, excuse me, a bidding, excuse me, regarding bidding for Phase 16 of the sidewalk improvement program to replace raised, cracked, or otherwise dangerous sidewalks. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the 2024 sidewalk repair program Phase 16 at a cost not to exceed $298,220. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as chair.
Questions? Thank you very much. We've come to the point in time of our meeting that citizen comments on any of the committee reports or anything on our agenda items. If you'd like to speak to any of those, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and have your two minutes of say. Everybody's jumping up, so we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R 15, 2025, please?
Resolution Number R 15, 2025. Resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council and declaring an emergency. This also includes that Agreement Number 36 with Arc abrasives would be terminated but Enterprise Zone Agreements 33, 34, 35, and 37 be continued. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R 16, 2025.
Resolution Number R 16, 2025. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council for the Troy Town Park TIF and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R 17, 2025?
Resolution Number R 17, 2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a design build contract with Boomball Construction, Inc. of Arcanum, Ohio for the completion of the park maintenance building project and declaring an emergency. The completion will be at a cost not to exceed $1.3 million. First reading.
Move to adopt.
Suspend. Second.
Mr. Twist, motion to suspend, readings, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Move to adopt now.
Second.
Mr. Twist, motion to adopt, Mr. Phillips second. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Will you please read Resolution R 18, 2025?
Resolution Number R 18, 2025. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Phase 16 of the sidewalk repair program. This project is not to exceed the amount of $298,220. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Twist, motion to suspend, Mr. Phillips second. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R 19, 2025?
Resolution Number R 19, 2025. Resolution adjusting fees related to various services of the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This was reported on this evening. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend the rolls?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 6, 2025?
Ordinance Number O 6, 2025. Ordinance accepting storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and bike path easements as shown on the Board of Education replat and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute any related documents. This is near the, what do we call, the North School, Hook School site, and this is the first reading.
Move to suspend the rolls?
Second.
Move to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee. I believe I need to abstain from this to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest because of my employment with Troy City Schools. Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
I believe I need to abstain from that as well due to my employment with Troy City Schools.
Mr. Severt.
It passed suspensions.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
We only had six on that, on the motion to suspend.
Yes.
We need seven on the suspension.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Goes to second reading.
Okay, sorry.
Blame Jeff. Blame Jeff. Moving on. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 7, 2025?
Ordinance Number O 7, 2025. An ordinance amending Chapter 915 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio regarding sewer rates and connections and municipal industrial pretreatment program. This was reported on this evening. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend the rolls?
Second.
Move to suspend by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Westfall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O 8, 2025?
Ordinance Number O 8, 2025. An ordinance approving the expansion project agreement filed by Project Sturgeon for the Employee Creation Incentive Program in the City of Troy, Ohio. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Move to suspend by Mr. Severt, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance oh nine twenty twenty five?
Ordinance number oh nine twenty twenty five. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the twenty twenty five Troy Strawberry Festival, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordances, further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter to an agreement with the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce therefore and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Westfall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance oh ten twenty twenty five?
Ordinance number oh ten twenty twenty five. Ordinance permitting use of certain property in the designated outdoor refreshment area for use as a designated outdoor refreshment area for the Troy Strawberry Festival, June sixth through June eighth twenty twenty five, and declaring an emergency. This is for the sale of alcohol during the Troy Strawberry Festival. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Move to suspend, Mrs. Westfall, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Moving on to ordinance oh eleven twenty twenty five. Will you please read that, Mrs. Knight?
Ordinance number oh eleven twenty twenty five. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the twenty twenty five Troy Truck Yard Event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance and declaring an emergency. This event will take place on Saturday, May tenth, twenty twenty five, from six P. M. to nine P. M. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Move to suspend by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mrs. Westfall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Westfall. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance oh twelve twenty twenty five?
Ordinance number oh twelve twenty twenty five. An ordinance amending ordinance number oh sixty two twenty oh seven, adopting a public records policy for the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Snee, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Do we have a lot of requests for public records?
Yes.
Does it go in streets?
It fluctuates, but yes. Different departments may receive different requests.
Could you please read ordinance oh thirteen twenty twenty five?
Ordinance number oh thirteen twenty twenty five. Ordinance amending ordinance number oh fifty four twenty twenty four, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This establishes the salary range and position of a project manager. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Move to suspend, Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
And Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a presentation by Jennifer Nisley, Program Director, Child Advocacy Center at Isaiah's Place.
Hello. Hello. Hi. You should all have a copy of just a handout, so I'm not going to read that to you verbatim. You're welcome to go through it. Like she said, my name's Jennifer Nisley. I'm the Program Director for the Child Advocacy Center at Isaiah's Place. If you were not on council a couple of years ago, when we first came to talk, just to give you kind of a really brief introduction, and for everyone else here of what that is and kind of what we do, we basically provide a coordinated response to the allegations of child abuse in Miami County. We got our beginnings out of the request from our local law enforcement, children's services, prosecutor's office, victim witness, mental health and medical providers in the county who were responding to these cases. The advocacy center kind of steps in to coordinate those efforts, work harder, or work smarter, not harder, try to kind of coordinate our efficiency to make those situations for children less traumatic in our community. So what that looks like is an allegation of abuse comes in, children then come to see us at the advocacy center for their forensic interviews. We coordinate with their mental health, connect them to mental health services, medical services through dating childrens, provide some follow-through and court case management type services. So we kind of are consolidating all of those efforts for these cases, for these kids. So I've been coming semi-regularly to try to just share, and we do get some financial contribution from each of our law enforcement jurisdictions in the county, as well as our JFS, as well as state, local, and federal funds and grants. And so I always want people to know what those dollars are doing, where they're going, and what we're using them for. So in your handout, kind of we just talk about and do a little bit of a review for twenty twenty four. So we served over a hundred and fifty-five individual children and families, and those are all families from Miami County. Last year for Troy specifically, we served twenty-nine, or conducted forensic interviews for twenty-nine individual children. Troy is our second highest in terms of where our cases are coming from. Pickwatt was first this year, and Troy was second in terms of just the number of children that we see. So some other twenty twenty-four highlights for you, we did add another, so it's myself, we have a full-time mental health therapist on board, and we've added a part-time social worker to also conduct forensic interviews, provide some of that case management and follow-up and whatnot. We've been able to keep our mental health therapist free of charge and off of a waitlist. So what that means is kids come into our center, they need connected to a therapist, they're likely able to get in within the same week, close to home, in their backyard, without traveling or being waitlisted. Many of those providers outside of our county are waitlisting two to four months, so we're really proud of being able to provide that for our kiddos. We also received, since the last time I came, received our accreditation status to the National Children's Alliance. So that's our accrediting body, basically means there's ten standards that we have to go through, that we have to meet to show that we're doing things in the best way possible for kids. And we met those requirements and received our developing accreditation status. Last year, we also were able to bring in a national trainer to provide training to local staff or just personnel who work with kids, who might need some extra training on how to respond to an allegation of abuse. If they have concerns, they see concerns, or a child makes an allegation, a lot of times people don't know what to do, they don't know how to handle that, so we provided some training. We had over a hundred and twenty-five folks from Miami County come, everyone from law enforcement to children's services. We had guidance counselors there, school principals, teachers, just to try to kind of help folks on how to respond to those situations, and then share more about our services and kind of what that looks like. We also, kind of an add-on that we didn't necessarily maybe start out in the first two years with a goal of providing, but just, we try to answer the call to our kids, to our community, and to our multidisciplinary team partners for what they need. And so one of those needs was to provide a child abuse prevention curriculum to the school districts. Aaron's Law passed in Ohio in twenty twenty-three requiring all of our public school districts, K through twelve, to provide sexual abuse training. So we actually purchased a curriculum. Our staff is trained in it, and then we've helped facilitate, kind of a train-the-trainer model for all the guidance counselors to conduct that in the schools. And so we renewed that last year with seven out of the eight public school districts in Miami County, so Troy, Pickwatt, Covington, Bethel, West Milton, and Miami East. We provide some backup support, technical assistance if they need something or have a question or concern regarding these cases, we're able to provide that to them as well. And just lastly, April's Child Abuse Prevention Month, so we talked a little bit about trying to do some things just to raise recognition and kind of awareness in our community. We've got pinwheels, we're planning pinwheels at JFS next week. The rain kind of keeps prolonging that. But just a reminder, one in ten children will be sexually abused by their eighteenth birthday. So when we're having conversations about the necessity of our services, you know, whether or not they're needed or not needed, we all know a child who unfortunately will likely encounter a situation like this. And so our goal is to respond to that child in a manner that is best practice, give them a chance to heal and recover from that trauma, provide the services that they need, ultimately hold the offender accountable. So I want to thank Chief McKinney's in the back, so Troy's been a really great partner. Troy Police Department, obviously, we work with all the police departments, and Troy's one that we never have any issue with. They are kind of recognize the benefits of this model, their staff are quick to communicate and to work together. And so we just really appreciate the partnerships that we've been able to develop over the last couple of years. And again, appreciate the support for the program and just look forward to continuing that and being able to respond to what the kids in our community need. So thank you for letting me come. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. How long have you been operating?
Yeah. So we did our first forensic interview in December of twenty twenty-two, so just over two full years.
Okay. And who did what you did prior to you?
Yeah. So that's a really good question. Sometimes it's easier to describe what we do by describing what happened before. And so kids maybe were interviewed in places that weren't super kid-friendly or trauma-informed, so maybe in principals' offices, in hospital rooms, maybe in adult suspect interrogation rooms. I mean, there's just, right, it was a necessity to have those conversations, and so they happened where they needed to happen. But maybe not necessarily in a manner that was in the best interest of the kid, or maybe by somebody who was trained in specifically how to gather that information. And one of the reasons why advocacy centers developed, so we're one of thirty-five in Ohio and over a thousand in the country, and one of the reasons why we developed is folks realizing that we can do it a little bit better, right? We can try to reduce those conversations, reduce the amount of people that are talking to kids about their trauma, and do it in a manner that's more kind of wraparound service, and so that they're not having to go to all those other agencies. They come once to us, the police are there, CPS is there, victim witness is there, and we're able to kind of wrap around and do that in kind of one appointment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Were you asking more who did the interviews or where they were at?
No, I just wanted... Like what it looked like before.
Did multiple people do the interviews?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What she's not telling you is that she started this program for the City of Troy, for the county. She built this program at Isaiah's Place. It is an amazing program.
That's awesome.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Do you keep empirical data as far as whether it's minor on minor or adult on minor?
You sure do.
And what are you finding on that?
Yeah. It's interesting you ask that. Do you know what our data was last year? So the amount of kid-on-kid cases is up over fifty percent. So kid-on-kid means eighteen and under on another eighteen and under. We do, we keep lots of data and statistics, that's one of our requirements. We have lots of grant reporting that we have to do, and so we keep all different kinds of data, but that population, and that's true nationwide, so that's not just us, and that's not just Ohio, that's nationally, the amount of cases that our kid-on-kid has skyrocketed. Yep. Good question. Anything else? Certainly reach out, my contact information is on there. If you have questions, or if you want to come see the place, we're certainly welcome to that. I think sometimes it's helpful to see it and kind of just, kind of understand the process and what it looks like, so certainly reach out, and we'd be happy to host you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
For coming. Communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight, do we have any this week?
No, sir.
Mayor?
I would just, continuing with the Child Advocacy Center, it is an amazing program, and if you get a chance to go take a tour, it is truly amazing what they do. I went to the ribbon cutting a couple of years ago, and it's just, it's a beautiful program, but heartbreaking that we even need it. I would rather that we didn't need this in Miami County, or anywhere in the country, but we do need it, and we have a program that's amazing and it works well. We just came off of a rainy couple of days, we've got a little bit of flooding. It's kind of surprising that the flooding does not even meet a moderate level. It still can, everything that we experienced is considered minor, which, those aren't our standards, but that is the standard, and we're happy that there were no injuries. We've got a few people that continue to drive around signs. We've got a few people that continue to drive around signs. So, if there are roads that are flooded, don't go through the signs, and that's it.
Do we have any major, I mean, damage is damage, but we have any major?
Nothing that we've heard about.
Mr. Tiderington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will save the storm event for last, but a couple of other things that are, that are going on this week is spring cleanup week for, incidentally, it probably couldn't happen at a, at a better time after this weekend. Did want to give an update on the West Main Street Phase Two. We are getting close, believe it or not. The asphalt plants are set to open next week. That does not mean that we'll be paving next week. Probably bears repeating, does not mean that. However, the contractor is finishing the Boulevard Right Turn Island at McDonald's. That's why you see the cones and the way we've spread out the, the traffic flow. After that, then they will schedule a series of processes, I guess, or sub-processes, to get the asphalt laid, starting with grinding all of the rough, as well as the smoother parts of it. So, grinding it down, doing a layer of paving. There will be some chip sealing, because that helps minimize the spider crap, cracking, cracking. And then, the final pavement after that. Given the stretch of distance that we're talking about, that's probably a two-week, a good two weeks at least that will take. We're not sure when they can schedule that, because the, primarily due to the chip and seal part of the process, you do need temperatures that are more consistently in the 70s range, or at least hitting 70. If you woke up this morning, you saw it wasn't quite at 70. The forecast is all over the place for the next week as well. Appreciate the feedback. So, the other thing that will happen is, is that we will be, I'm in the process of signing the contract amendment to, with Miami Valley Lighting to get the black aluminum poles. Appreciate council's feedback and support on that. That will take some time to install. And I believe, in air, I hope you all got the communication, I did not mean 2027. It'll be 2025. I am 99.9% sure that that will happen, but we will, we will have new streetlights as part of that project. And then, we can consider it substantially complete. That was number two. We go back to the storm event this weekend. I did not really talk to the mayor about this issue. I talked plenty during the day. We talk all the time. So, whether they consider this a minor event, moderate event, or horrendous event, I know that there were folks that did not feel it was very minor. Just to give you some perspective, we had a little over two inches of rain on Saturday, under normal circumstances, that probably shouldn't elevate to anywhere near what we saw, particularly with the river levels. However, in the last week, we had an accumulation of five to seven inches. So, between all of that flow coming from the north, as well as the saturated groundwater, that's what made this a bigger event. Miami Conservancy District, which very religiously tracks the data for obvious reasons on these events, they had predicted at the, before this started, that it could be one of the top five events that they've had in their history. Turned out to be the 12th largest event in over 103 years. The last event of this magnitude, actually greater magnitude, was back in 2013, and that tied for number four. Just so you, just so you know. I did have a meeting with 11 other community CMs this morning, Charlotte and I did. What we experienced, those communities experienced as well, it was a, it was a regional issue. And in fact, the farther south you go, the longer the flood peaking is, is taking to, to come down. Our flood levels peaked at about 2:00 in the morning, on Sunday morning, and started to recede. However, by Saturday afternoon, the surging, the bubbling, the, the overflowing of the, the pipe system, main system, had come down pretty significantly, a little higher than you, than average, but you weren't seeing it on the street. Want to commend the staff, that they did a great job in a couple of ways. We pre-planned for the, for worst case by spending about three days last week prior to the event, knowing that something was coming, using the back truck and trying to clear as many of the catch basins as possible. And then, staff was in on Saturday between 6:00 a.m. and about 1:30 p.m. We didn't receive any calls or, or concerns after 1:30 in the afternoon, which, again, we did start to see some receding. Couple of the areas in town got hit a little harder, mostly in the Westbrook subdivision. But there were a couple of issues at Stanfield Place, off South Stanfield Road. They, they were experiencing water in the basements. What I want to say is, is that those were related to sanitary sewer line issues, not stormwater line issues. All the reservoirs were, were full on the, and the retention and detention ponds for the stormwater system were all full. They were at and over capacity. There was water, you know, over, over the streets, no, no question about that. But the issues related to the water in the basements were from sanitary system surging that was related to the, to the last week's worth of water. We're still investigating what exactly those issues were related to. They are probably inadvertent or illegal sump pump connections, or drainpipe cross connections into the sanitary system, saturated groundwater playing a part of that. And generally, what we call those issues are inflow and infiltration, I and I. Those of you who've been on council for a while will remember that we have done several years' worth of sewer relining, where we go in and we reline the mains. We did that in, in Westbrook. It's why we're thinking that there were some kind of connections at different properties that were adding to the, the volume of water that was trying to go through the stormwater, but instead getting diverted into the sanitary system. Again, this is one of those rare type events, number 12 on the list of 103 years' worth of data. The system's not going to, no system's going to be designed to handle that. We try to prep, we try to practice, especially when there's a sewer-related, related issue. That's not to say that there was not at least one ongoing construction project. And I do want to say that, you know, in the case of Westbrook, it had nothing to do with any of the new construction that was going on. That project is too new in its construction cycle to even be connected to, to the system. So, that had nothing to do with it. There was one out in, near Kensington, the, I'm drawing a blank, Somerset Project, where, of course, it's always Murphy's Law. They're in the midst of constructing stormwater infrastructure. They had the pipe in the ground, the pipe had not been anchored yet. That was like a this week project. And of course, the lines floated and, and caused some issues. I do want to commend the contractor. They did get out fairly quickly to resolve that issue and clear the pipes, so that that water could get cleared away. And I think it did fairly, fairly quickly, quickly after that. You know, we'll evaluate this event like we do any other event, as well as we possibly may have to go out and do some inspections in Westbrook, just to see where connections are occurring, so that we can minimize the chance of that happening again.
Do you know if it, is it the earlier section of Westbrook versus the?
I don't have that data. I know we're going to plot the complaints that we received.
Because being there twice before, and the previous resident, it's the builder that built those houses took a shortcut instead of running two pipes out, tied them together.
If it's...
But that's way before anybody was here.
Yeah, and, and if it's old enough, that wasn't quite as legal as it is now.
I know.
So, that doesn't surprise me that it would be the older section.
The COVID, the Sussex fleet, north.
I don't, I don't have the data. We're, we're going to get the data from the plumber that primarily responded to those calls, just to plot where, where those addresses were. Not saying that they're the ones that were cross-connecting, they're just the ones that were affected.
I would say, I would guess that they might be there.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Friggy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Tiderington covered everything in this song, so I have nothing else to do.
All right, law director, Mr. Kerber.
I have nothing as well.
Mr. Seaver?
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize for not being at the at-large committee meeting, despite advocating for it on at least three prior occasions. But I want to thank Ms. Westfall and Ms. Snee for covering in my sickness for that day, and I could not be there. And I heard there was about 35 people, so good crowd, thanks for coming. Just briefly, Patrick, on the, first, I want to thank you for getting the lights. I know that's been addressed by a number of council members with you, both privately and publicly. I assume we'll have to do a reap appropriation, is that correct?
That's possible, but it would be a mid-year.
Mid-year, okay, thank you. Thirdly, thanks to Leadership Troy. I see a number of you out there, and a number of you were here the last meeting, which only had about four agenda items, so you guys picked the wrong time to come. But we're always glad to have you. And finally, I had two items today about the Tax and Incentive Review Council and the Project Sturgeon for Economic Development. I just want to thank Troy Development Council and our development group for doing this. We had a meeting this morning, and we were advised that the unemployment rate for our area was at 5% today, 5.1%, and that's the highest it's been since February of 2017, excluding COVID, obviously. And one of the reasons, even though that seems high, that's still historically low, but that's because of the hard work that we have to go out and expand our industries and our corporations in retention and expansion, which are both of the, both of these, if you look into the details, is so important to our community. And I want to thank Patrick and Troy Development Council, Joey Graves, Tim Davis, and the other people who are on it for your hard work in that.
That's all I have. Thank you. Mrs. Snee?
Just also a thank you for those who attended our March 22 at-large meeting. It was very well-attended for one of our quarterly meetings, and we appreciate everyone who was able to come out for that and present your ideas and ask your questions. I know Mrs. Westfall has some further follow-up on that.
Yeah, I do. Just as a review, we met on March 22 at 9:00 a.m. at the at-large council as the at-large quarterly meeting at Halifax Clubhouse. We had about 35 people there, which was the largest group I've witnessed. And Mrs. Snee and I kind of ran the meeting, Mr. Seaver was ill, Mr. Rozell was there, Mr. Wooden was there, Mr. Pierce was there. I think that's all that was there. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry. There were several concerns voiced by citizens, and I did meet, meet with Mr. Tiderington the next week. And I kind of want to go through a few of those and let Mr. Tiderington address those. One of the concerns was about candy and trash and dirty sidewalks from Grandpa Joe's to the rec area, and a lot of kids prowling that area, of course, between the rec and Grandpa Joe's. And one of the requests was that possibly have a walking police presence between 3:30 and 5:00. And, and Mr. Tiderington will fill you in on what has been happening with that, and some things that I didn't realize were happening. There was a question about how land is annexed and what that process is, concerns about communication in an emergency, and where we are in that process of updating our system, how to make a complaint on property, and is that made public, naming the person who complained? People were concerned about remaining anonymous. Also, what's the process of enforcing ordinances about cars and trailers that are supposed to be moved, and how long that process takes? Are there progress reports about Troy's finances available to the public? And also, what are the pink flags at Archer Park? So, those were some of the things, there were many other things. It was a pretty lively conversation, and I would encourage everyone to come and, and give us your, your feedback. I want to thank everybody that showed up. I did not get enough doughnuts, and I apologize, and I will make them do better. But we, we do look forward to your questions and concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I wrote, I think, everything down. So, trash downtown, did follow up with the park superintendent. They are making that a daily routine now that the weather has, well, kind of warmed up.
Just when you think it up.
Did talk to Chief McKinney about kind of a walking officer during the, the school let-out time. And they had been doing that, and they will continue to do that. They do it randomly, 3:30 to 5:00 o'clock is, is a, can be a busy time for them, but they are making an effort. We don't want to do it on a routine basis, otherwise, you know, people know when to, even kids know when to, you know, act up and when not to. The annexation process, I have our communication coordinator putting a little social media blurb together to put out. In a nutshell, we really only recognize here or accept one type of annexation. That's the Type II expedited annexation. It's a cleaner, quicker, property owner-led and, and guaranteed process. So, it just goes smoothly for, for everybody. We're not predatory in our, in our annexations. But they come to us typically with annexation requests. So, I wrote this so fast. Oh, emergency communications, did have a follow-up conversation with the, the dispatch center, the county dispatch center, the 911 board did recommend an upgrade in the contact information code red and I-Pause, I believe it's called. And so, in the future, we will be able, and the policy has been updated as well, so that the protocol for the amber alert-type alerts that you get on your devices can be used for boil advisories. We would use those for community-wide boil advisories, as we already have a system where we, if it's a neighborhood or a block boil advisory, we will, you know, hand-carry handbills around to, to all of those property owners. Property complaints, I'll couple these two together. Property complaints and cars and trailers, those kind of things, those can be handled through our website. They can be called into the development department. They can walk into the development department. There are a variety of different ways that they can file a complaint. We do not make those public. We do not include complainant names on the, you know, you see every two weeks in the I and, the items of interest, the I and I in this case, where we show by, by ward the property complaints and the, and the status of those complaints. There is nowhere where it talks about a complainant, and so we do try to...
Find out who made that complaint.
I suppose somebody could, under public records, because it's not confidential.
And you can't do it anonymously, you have to give a name when you complain.
I imagine if you called in on a block number, and we don't know who you are, we don't require you to identify yourself.
Okay.
You know, we don't...
That, that was the concern, that if you gave your name, someone could make a request and find that name.
Only if it's written down and documented somewhere.
Okay.
Let's see, finances, we do have a variety of different reports. I mean, we've got our budget online, it shows our history of expenses, as well as our current budget. The items of interest every month includes a report at the back of it that talks about contracts that, and, and bills that have been paid between $25,000 and $75,000, because that was a gap once the, you know, the, the state changed and increased the, the minimum levels. As well as if anybody has any questions about a particular report, we can easily generate that through the auditor's office and get them to, get, get that to them pretty quickly.
So, they would either ask to have the packet that we get, or call in public records request?
Yeah, the packet is published online as well.
Yeah, so they would have that, they get on...
Or they can call in and ask for that information.
That was, I think, their overriding concern.
Okay. The pink flags on Archer Park is, is part, is follow-up to council authorizing the transfer of some of the parcels. Remember, Archer Park is consists of about 27 different parcels. Half of them are park board-owned, half of them were city-owned. And so, you authorized transferring ownership all to the park board. And now, we are in the process with survey work of consolidating and combining that into one lot, so we don't have 27. Or maybe one or two lots, but the pink flags denote where the boundary lines are.
And I think the, once it had pink flags at the back of their property, got a letter to that explanation, correct?
Okay.
At least one did.
Can I follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
One other question about the annexation. There was a question of whether or not, when we have an annexation request, does the city council have any ability to say no to that? Is it required that we annex it?
Well, you, yes, that's one of the three required ordinances that you have to pass at the beginning of the process. One of them is buffering, another one is something, and then the third one is, well, the, the second one is, is that you agree to give the same services as you would anybody in the city, since there would be annexing in. And then, the third ordinance is accepting the annexation petition.
I can think of one other question that somebody asked me, that is a minor one, which you did answer with me. But it was asked, what does it cost to get copies of public records printed, and how do you go about that?
Okay, so, everything but video records that you just passed tonight. If it is a paper copy, it's five cents a, a page. If it's an email or any kind of digital transmittal, there's no cost for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Marshall?
I had two things, really quick, I'll be quick. Congratulations to all of the first responders that were recognized and honored last week for all that they do. And then, the other thing was, so I'm assuming since things can't be really paved right now, right there in front of the water treatment plant, I've had a couple of people ask me if that is going to be taken care of.
Yes, absolutely.
I figured it would.
And it's actually going to be a separate contract, because it, the, I can't remember what the volume of asphalt is, but, and I believe that it's 14 inches of asphalt, at least. It amounts to about a third of a football field that needs to be done, so it's not something we're going to be doing in-house. But we will contract that out.
Soon.
As, well, as soon as the asphalt plants, asphalt plants open.
Never, never as soon as they want it.
Well, no, of course, they wanted it yesterday.
We've had a lot of water main breaks this year, so there are a lot of patches like that around the city.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
I'm sure. That one was in particular, that was, I've had a few people ask about.
Sometime this summer.
Mr. Witten.
Firstly, I want to apologize to Mrs. Knight. I incorrectly said she put the wrong date on there when it was myself who read the date.
I did not hear you say that, but that's.
Then secondly, just reiterating what Mr. Titterington said, this week is spring cleanup. I can't encourage citizens enough to take advantage of that, to get on the website to see where the rules are relaxed. It's a great thing the city does to help try to clean out the yard and house. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce.
Thank you. I want to thank the at-large members for having their quarterly meeting, and it was very good to be able to have that dialogue with the residents of our fine city.
Mr. Phillips.
The response to the water issues, especially at Somerset, were really great. And fortunately, I had a friend with me that had the developer's phone number with him, so they were there within 20 minutes of getting that phone call. And they did assist a couple of the township properties that were adjacent to it that had crawl spaces and getting water out of that. So they really went a little over and above their call to do that, even though it was a faux pas on their part that caused the water issues there. So congratulations to them, but also to all the other public employees that responded to all of the areas with all of the issues that we did have, whether they classify them as minor or major, depending on your particular issue. And the quarterly, you know, generally, I'm there, and I wasn't also, because I was ill with the same crud that's been going around. So they are a good communication device and that sort of thing, so it's always great to have that. Thank you.
Mr. Twist.
I feel like I should say something, just because everybody else has. The only thing I was going to say is I want to clarify my votes for the strawberry festival. I am for the strawberry festival. I don't want anybody slashing my tires in the Troy Truck Yard. I am opposed to the sale of alcohol, so that is why I voted no. So I just wanted to clarify that. I am for Troy Strawberry Festival and all events to gather people to our great city.
All right. Are we still in? Yes, ma'am.
Welcome to the Troy Leadership Team, but also, we have a couple of students from Miami East government class here. And they picked a night also, Longwood. I will sign your paper and ask your teacher to give you extra credit.
And it wasn't even spring break, was it? We are still in the application period for the fire department apprenticeship?
Always.
Always.
Okay. And speaking of leadership Troy, Leadership Troy is going to have their mock council meeting on Wednesday up here in the morning after the mayor and the auditor get done talking to them. Everybody's welcome to come to that. Any of you people that are out trying to golf, you'll have a handful of holes to play. I think it's 1, 2, 3, 8, 8, 9, 10, and 18, till further notice, at least through this week. And to the city, this is a question from Baird Funeral Home. They are very appreciative of the compensation they got for the indigent person they had to take care of. They would like to know who they need to send that thank you to.
Well, actually, they already did. They sent one to the mayor and myself. We will share that with the cemetery staff.
Okay. That's it. Public comment, staff. Charlotte still awake? No questions? Police chief, any public need to come up to the podium, ask your question, name and address for the record, and ask your question and make whatever comments you would like.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Richard Pittenser, and I live in Westbrook on Dartmouth Road. And I'd like to tag on to what Mr. Titterington was saying about the blackwater backup in my neighborhood. Me and at least five neighbors between Amesbury and Branford Road, overnight, Friday night, early Saturday morning, I'm not sure if we were away, we came home noon about on Saturday, find this blackwater in our basement. And there was a house several doors away that had a hose running out. And, you know, we come to find out it was sewer water. We're not talking stormwater at this point. This is at least three times. We're one of the last original owners, as far as I know. We've been in this home 49 years. And until around 2010, we've had sump pump issues in the past, which are stormwater-related, but we started at that point getting blackwater backups. And it's a public health issue, for one, and it's a real mess. I've been working on it since. I took yesterday off, hit it again today. And I'm probably going to be in my basement the rest of this week cleaning up this nasty stuff. So I guess I'm, I don't understand. I'm not a sanitary engineer. I don't understand the systems under the street. But I don't understand why you would ever get storm, if the stormwater is causing this problem, why it would, you know, intertwine into the sanitary sewer system and cause a backup like this. I guess I'm representing these other five people. I've surveyed all of them. I've been out today in the neighborhood talking to a number of these neighbors. And there was one of the sanitary sewers, the streets are marked right now, which is a fortunate thing, because I understand there's some new gas lines going to be replaced, and so they're marked on the street to note whether or not it's sanitary or stormwater. And we were walking up and down like Ansberry, and you can look down through the holes in the manhole covers. And even this afternoon, like early afternoon, you can see water in that sanitary sewer no more than like four inches below the manhole cover. On Dartmouth, I couldn't quite see the water level. I don't know why that is. But it would appear to me that there's some long-running issue in that system to cause this problem, even though I understand that it was an extreme amount of rain in a short period of time. So we're just asking, you know, please look into this and see if there's not some, I don't know, it could be a broken pipe, whether there's some drains from the sump pumps plumbed into that. I don't know. But that's our concern. Thank you all. You know, I'd be glad to talk to you as a part of the, from the meeting, you know, if I can provide any other detail that I've been able to clean.
Can you share your address?
940 is my address. I'm the northernmost issue. It appears that, you know, water flows south from my property. I have the other street numbers as well, if you'd like them, Mr. Titterton.
That'd be great, if you could share that with us.
Okay.
And as I said earlier, you know, we're going to continue to look into it and inspect your confusion about stormwater versus blackwater. I like that term. It's a little classier than maybe what we call it.
I'm a former camper, and that's kind of the terms.
There you go, okay.
Gray water and black water.
Gray water, I've heard that one. But it truly could be that someone connected storm and rainwater pipes into the sanitary system. We did pull up some manholes. You may not have seen down the manhole, because a lot of, in a lot of cases, those are fairly deep, probably deeper than you think, so you might not be able to see all the way down. But when you say it's about four inches worth of water, that's, we hope that's typical. And so after about 2:00, 2:30 on Saturday, when they started pulling manholes, that's about the level, maybe a little higher, that they started to see it receding down to. So that was back to normal. So something happened where it was getting into the sanitary lines, overloading the lines, and that's where it starts to back up path of least resistance. And unfortunately, you and five others.
On Amesbury, that was today, though. I could stick my finger down through a hole in the manhole cover, and it got wet today around noon.
Interesting, okay. Well, we will be continuing to look into it.
Certainly appreciate that.
Feel your pain, been there, done that.
Pardon?
So feel your pain, been there and done that.
Yes. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. All righty. We shall conclude the meeting, and the next one should be on, let's see, the April 21st, 7 o'clock here. Thank you.